Good evening. We welcome you here at the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are here in attendance. With that, we have an opening ceremony. Councilmember Steve Buehler.
Thank you. My election invite everybody to stand with me and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Then we go to our minutes of February 11th. Motion of the minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes of February 11th?
Second. Right before us, any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. The minute to approve. Next, we come to our public comment period. I didn't have any... No one signed up. If you are here to speak to the application on the Ara Industrial Park, or the zone text change on monopole towers, or the change on 1950 West from C2 general commercial to manufacturing, those will have separate public hearings on where there will be an opportunity for people to speak. Is there anyone else?
Sustainability Zone also will have public hearings. Item eight.
Yes, that's clear down here. Yeah, it's under unfinished business. That's right. You mentioned that before I was there. And so are those four. But if you're here to speak on any other issue, is there anyone here to speak just generally? Seeing none, then we'll close that. Public comment period. Mr. Isaac, anything?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, anything at this point? Seeing none, then we'll move right along. So we'll go to our first public hearing. This is on application SA-102019 filed by Corbin Benyon. Final plat approval for Ara Industrial Park Phase III. This is at 2540 South, 6400 West. In conjunction with that, we will consider ordinance 20-08 to this particular piece of property. There is a one large piece of property, and it will be split into two pieces as they continue to develop those warehouses along the 201 corridor. So these lots looking approximately 46 acres in... They're split into one of 30 acres, the other of 46 acres. And then there will be a new right-of-way along the eastern boundary of that, 6480 West Street. And also some South Frontage Road dedicated as part of this as well. So pretty straightforward, so I think I'll stop there as an introduction and see if there's anyone here to speak to this issue. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing portion, public input portion, and we'll bring it back to the council.
Move for approval of ordinance 20-08?
Second. Right before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder, then for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Then, next we go to application ZT-162019 filed by APC Towers. This is requesting a text change, a zone text change, to part of our code provisions applicable to what are called monopole towers. Can we get that up? And they're requesting a change currently. We allow for maximum height on these towers for transmissions of 60 feet and a maximum width, including the antennas of 24 inches. And then there are stealth requirements. If it's stealth, certain requirements put on there to make them look more a part of the environment. And the request is to modify the height to 100 feet and for 36-inch widths. And then in the M-zone, which are also designated heavy manufacturing in the general plan, that the requirements would change for those. That is the issue before us. To the public, then, for any public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Oh, yes, someone's standing. All right. Thank you.
Sorry for my delay getting up. Mayor Feld, councilmembers, my name is Naffy Garcia, and I'm the applicant who has been had in front of you this evening. My address is... I'm with APC Towers. Address is 366 E Sigma Grove, North Salt Lake. Let me... A couple things I'd like to... First of all, talk to you about is your code for West Valley City and codes pretty much all up and down the Los Hatch front. And also, I did work... I lived in Vegas before here, did work in Las Vegas. Pretty much all the codes encourage co-location, which means if there's a tower standing, the city encourage you to use that facility. And West Valley City has that in their code. They say if there's a tower there, or even a building, a rooftop, we want you to use that first rather than put up something new. And that's pretty much standard in the industry. Case in point, prior to me working here at APC, I was on the Verizon project for 11 years here in Salt Lake. About four, five years ago, they gave me a site to work here in West Valley, basically west of Constitution, north of Parkway Boulevard. That was the search area they wanted. So I was working it, and that area, there wasn't anything that gave them the height they wanted. So if they want the height they wanted, it had to be a new monopole. But the code, the way the code's written says, you have to have a half-mile distance from any other monopole. So there's a monopole. If you picture in your mind, now you're just north of Parkway Boulevard. This time, east of Constitution, there's that concrete plant, and then the Redman Stores and I-215. Right there at that concrete plant, next they built a monopole tower there back in the late 90s. And there's three carriers on that, and then Verizon decided to go on that as well. So because the code is written and encouraged next... Sorry, excuse me. Encouraged Verizon to go on that, to follow the code and use that. And you can see Verizon's the fourth carrier on that tower. So co-location is encouraged. Current code of West Valley City is, I look at it, it's one blanket, one size fits all. No matter whether I'm in the industrial zone, manufacturing, commercial, same rules apply. What I'm asking for, and those rules are, as Mayor mentioned, you go up to 60 feet, but you have to do what we call a slim line. In other words, antennas are like in a straitjacket. They're hugging the pole like this versus like the one over here at the concrete place, they're fuller way, as we call them. They're sticking out more. So code says, current code says I can do 60-foot slim line or a stealth design that fits into the area. And also, as I mentioned, there's a half-mile separation distance. That's current code. So what you're asking for today, the change only in the heavy manufacturing zone. Not commercial, not industrial, it's a heavy manufacturing. That's the only zone we're asking for, which in this area is pretty much the ATK parcel, right? 5400 and use of 111. That's that heavy manufacturing zone. So I'm asking for a change in that area. The change to allow up to 100-foot monopole and to allow non-slim lines rather than the fuller way antennas. That's what we're asking for. So why are we asking for that? Number of reasons. It's difficult for the carriers to... You know, when we all got our phones 15, 20 years ago, they were just talking, right? Well, that's not what it is now, right? So the carriers are pushing a lot of technology through the antennas. And to do that, if they're doing slim lines, they have to take up three different heights on the pole to push all the technology through. So with a slim line, that discourages co-location, not discouraged. It prohibits co-location because carriers taking, one carrier's taking three heights on a 60-foot pole. Because a 100-foot pole, we can have, say, Verizon at the top with their fuller way, 10 feet below that, AT&amp;T, you know, T-Mobile, you know, those are the carriers that go on that. So... And stealth, stealth is an option. But again, it has to fit in the area, and we look at some stealth option there. It's really hard to do a stealth design that blends in with the whole flatland and all the ATK businesses going, that goes out there. It also makes it difficult to have four carriers attached to a stealth design. A fuller way monopole, you can easily do four carriers, and there's four licenses here in this market. So in my opinion, I think it's better to have one, one and 100-foot monopole with four carriers on it rather than six, I'm sorry, rather than four 60-foot monopoles. Case in point, the one I talked about here off Constitution. It's one, and that tower there is actually 100-foot. So you've got one 100-foot monopole with four carriers on it. And that's an essence we're asking for here, for you, from you this day and today. Thank you for your time. I stand for any questions you may have.
I do have one. You mentioned that on the stealth pole, it was more difficult to, even though, you know, it was higher, more difficult to have four carriers on there. Why is that?
Well, let's look. The main, one of the main stealth designs is a tree. Palm trees, of course, don't work here. They work in Las Vegas. Palm trees, you're going to do probably two. One of it, and then the nut of it, and then the fronds. So that's pretty much maxed out, two carriers on a palm tree. But a palm tree won't fit here, right? Not in Salt Lake. Pine tree would. We've done a number of pine trees. And that, you can typically get three or four, which work well. But here on ATK parcel, if you can imagine a fake pine tree, it's not going to blend in, right? We've done some water tanks, and there you can only get two carriers. You know, one inside the tank and maybe another one on the legs of the tank. So that's just why, when you do stealth designs, again, depending on the type, it makes it harder to do four carriers, because there's four licenses here in this area. That's just, that's why. Pine tree, I could probably do it, but you don't want to stand out. Pine tree would stand out, in my opinion, out there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, and we'll close the public comment period. Back to the council. Oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, I think, that we're all considering ordinance 20-09 in conjunction with this. I gave the application number, but not the ordinance number. I would move to approve ordinance 20-09. Second. Any further comments?
I think I would still prefer a lone pine tree out there than a... Just a monopole. The fact that ATK may not be there forever, and the different uses may come in. I think a pine tree would possibly fit into future uses than... I know it's flat ground now, but unless they were willing to tear it down and have it match whatever goes in eventually, I don't see putting a monopole out there.
Certainly, it's not more of an eyesore, if it is an eyesore, than a monopole. If there are future uses where it would... If we were wishing that we had held tight to a stealth design, then, you know, it's too late to do that 20, 30 years in the future.
This is a great opportunity area. If you looked in the whole valley, there's nothing with as much opportunity as that has, I don't think. And it's important that we preserve that.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
No.
Councilwoman Ling?
No.
Councilman Buehler?
No.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Norfelt?
No.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay. With that, then, we'll go to our next public hearing, which is on application...
I have a resolution, so I move to make a motion to deny ordinance 20-09?
Second. Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Councilwoman Ling? Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Nay.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Okay. Now we go to next. Thank you for that. Forgot my own rule. Okay, now, application ZPZ-62019 filed by KDA Investments, Western Flats, requesting a general plan change from general commercial to light manufacturing, and a zone change from C2 to M for property at 3572 South 1950 West. And the vehicle we'll use for that will be ordinance 20-10, ordinance 20-11, and resolution 20-20 for all the different pieces of that. This particular request is to allow, in the middle of an area that is Zone C2, to have a manufacturing zone, but a development agreement will be attached to that. This location is where there is, I guess, auto restoration business. There is also a commissary there. These currently aren't allowed in that zone. This change, if made, and the development agreement is passed, would make it a manufacturing zone, but limited only to those businesses. And in other words, other kinds of businesses could not come in there. It would be limited to these types of businesses. And I think, as we discussed in our council meeting, we'll see what the motion is, whether we actually limit it to that specific business or in that category of business. This business has been located there for a number of years, seven years, I believe. So it was discovered that things that do not fit in that category. And so we're looking at this as a possibility to change that or whatever might happen with these motions. With that introduction, then, did I cover that well enough? Is there anything else we ought to add there? That kind of was a little brief. But anyway, I talked too much on it in the previous meeting, so... Anyway, that's basically the issue before us. And then we will see where things go from there. We will now open it for public comments. Anyone here to speak to this issue? Yes, come up. Please introduce yourself by name, and if you represent an organization, and your address, so that we can contact you if need be.
Thank you. My name is Susan Patterson. I live in the Stone Creek condos. I know, right now, it's been okay, but directly behind me is the businesses for my bedrooms. And so if they do any auto mechanics right behind the Stone Creek condo, it's going to be a health hazard. Okay, so anyways, the ones that are in the back, sometimes they make noise. You know, they're pretty good. But I'm worried about the noise ordinance, because my bedrooms are right behind it. And if they open up their doors to work when it's hot, I'm going to hear mechanical banging, you know? So that is my concern. That's all.
Just to clarify and question, how long have you lived at the location you're at?
15 years.
Okay.
Okay.
And the business has been there for seven years? Okay.
And they've been pretty good, Ben. I am really concerned about this change. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak to this?
You know, as a car collector, I support what they do there. I've been in their shop many a times. I haven't heard a lot of noise coming out of their place. I think they run a pretty good ship. You know, I know there's some changes. I think you talked, they wanted to start selling some cars on the spot, but it won't be the restoration cars, because, you know, you get a Corvette that's $120,000, you're not going to park it out on the street and leave it out there overnight. And they have a lot of cars that way. They have some Lamborghinis and some high-end cars. So they're not, they're not a slop shop. If we're worried about different places around the city that we need to look at, we need to look at some of the shops down by the city shops, Larry's, different things down there. We just got rid of one by the rendezvous, the transmission shop, that we allowed to sit there for a long time with a lot full of debris. But these guys run a pretty good shop. They've got some nice cars. You bring a lot of people in to look at their cars. I show with them at Autorama, places like that. So I would like to see them be able to continue and do what they do, because, you know, we need places like that. It brings I am people out to our cities. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this issue?
Hi, I'm Joe Cunningham. I live in West Valley, 4139 South Colt Court. I'm representing both KDA and Western Flats, as well as the DT Auto Brokers. Couple minor issues. Our development and what we're zoning is on the other side of the building, so there's another building between us and the condos, so... And everything that we do goes out of the north side of the building, so there would never... It'd be very difficult for the residential portion to be involved with this. So there are some in the C2 zone across that back building that are over there. And if they are obnoxious or anything, these people right behind you will be happy to take care of that with staff and that. So we try to do everything that we do inside for those of you. First off, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak today. But to tell you a little bit about our organization, we try to stay inside as much as we can. We've been there for quite a while. This all came about when we had the discussion of outside storage and some of the things that weren't originally allowed in a C2 zone. And working with staff and planning, they've been fabulous for us and have come up with this idea. And I fought this. I think Jody could tell you from staff for quite a while that I didn't want to change zoning. I thought the C2 zone is fine, and, you know, that wasn't the answer. And as we looked at this, there's a few things that we would lose by changing to a manufacturing zoning. You know, we would never be able to get a dental office in there, and there was a couple other small items like that. We're not going to go to the full length of what this is with the development agreement, so we'll never be doing some of the things that they would allow, like, what is it, the car? You know, we're not going to have a big crusher in there and do those type of things, gravel pits, anything like that. So it just helps us become compatible with the neighborhood. So we've been in there a while, but it's kind of with the city changing that we've become a non-traditional use, maybe, just to fit in the exact zoning that we would be there. And for some of you that have had the chance to come out and kind of look at that, you know, with the neighboring area, we're very compatible with what's there, and we hope to stay there. We've had a lot of opportunities to move to other areas and to, you know, build other buildings and do that, but we like where we're at, and it's, you know, been kind of a fun situation. And so we hope can stay there and last and be part of a community. And we're excited with West Valley and the opportunity that we've had to be there. So that being said, are there any questions that I could answer for the council?
Okay. Just to clarify one item.
Yes, sir.
Your intended use there is what's there now.
That is correct.
So vehicles stored there, not anything else.
Yeah, and we have outdoor, some outdoor vehicles, which are just more of a standard-type vehicle that are for sale on the side. And we have cars that are brought in that we don't consider junk, but whether they're running or not running, until we can get them into the queue and get them restored and out, then, you know, they'll be sitting outside. But a lot of those have a ridiculous value when you look at what they are just because of the desires. But we're not, we're not changing what we're doing. Everything is just the same, and we're going to just continue forward. You mentioned a little bit about the kitchen or the commissary. That's, that was a commissary in the past, or they had with Jason's Deli and those type of things. And then it went to a cookie place and a kitchen. And so it's kind of stuck in the back there, and you hate to rip a kitchen out or not be able to utilize that. And she's run it the last year as a restaurant, and, you know, she struggles without the commissary part just because there's not huge traffic that gets into the back there. But, I mean, you can go in there any day for lunch and still have Hawaiian food, so it's been good that way.
I came by earlier today and visited the young place a little bit. Also, I stopped by at Elila. Yeah, and I took a tour there earlier today and tried to check it out. Mayor suggested me to go over there, and so I did. Seeing like anything you walk inside is not, I don't think there's noise. It's anything is out there.
And as I said, I think even if we had a door open, it would be going to the north and away from the residential. So we don't have any real access to our shops or anything on the south side. And eventually, the way this is designed, is there's another commercial building that goes against our building on the south side, which would give another cushion even to those that are on the south and the southeast portion of that. So we try to be good neighbors. I mean, it's... But there's a lot of different places in there. But I think there's only one shop in the far corner, but they're more of a used car. And then there's a couple of mechanics across the back end there. But they, I think generally, they've all been pretty decent, so... Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak to this issue? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion of it, and we'll bring it back to the council.
I would move for approval of ordinance 20-10?
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Nay.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, that takes care of ordinance 20-10. Council still there?
Move for approval of ordinance 20-11?
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Nay.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, that took care of ordinance 20-11. Move for approval of resolution...
Move for approval of resolution 20-20.
Properly before us, any comments? I do have one, but it may not go very far. But, you know, my feeling of restricting that in the development agreement so that other types of storage could not be done there, but only the existing one, it would be nice to have that restriction as well. My main concern was when, soon as they said pallets, I said, ooh, that's not what we would want there. But I don't make motions, I just make comments. Any further comments? Don, would you be willing to accept that amendment to?
Yes.
To only allow vehicle storage? Is that?
Yes, I'd accept that.
I wonder if we just clarify that with Jody, just to, if you'd come up to the microphone and just confirm that that language is appropriate and that that would fit in the development agreement.
Yes, there's two ways to handle that. So the outside storage is a conditional use. So that can just be a condition of their approval that it's limited to that specific use. Or if you want it as part of the development agreement, you can modify that as well.
Which question? Would the conditional use run with the land or is it specific to that property?
It runs with the land.
Okay. So? So it would be permanent?
Yes.
And is that the one you would recommend as the conditional use?
Yes.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be part of the development agreement?
Right.
Okay. So the conditional use is already in place?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure.
It was, yeah, the condition was specific that it's outside storage in conjunction with vehicle restoration.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it's right called. Yep, thank you very much.
So the friendly amendment then is not needed to the motion. Is that right?
That's correct. That is not needed because it is already in place. Seeing no further comments, to the city recorder.
Councilman Pitismanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Orville?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we go to, I made on our agenda, our unfinished business from before. This is, and will be a public hearing, this is on application ZT-15 2019, and our method of dealing with it will be ordinance 20-06. This is requesting, again, a change to our code, a zone text change, creating a residential sustainability zone. What this is, that currently we have building requirements and certain items are there. We have our residential estates, we have agricultural, different places, and then certain building codes as to the size and everything else. In order to get a development where there is significantly higher standards for sustainability, reduced energy consumption, reduced water consumption, et cetera, this proposal was made. And in return for doing this, 8,000 square foot lots are allowed. So in requiring these higher standards, we give the developers a benefit of having the smaller lots. Some of the items, and we put together a proposal with that. See if I can get all those up, but, oh, come on, fingers don't work. Anyway, in that proposal, a number of items were identified in appliances, plumbing, in heating, in yard landscaping, roofing. All of those items were identified and standards put in place. In the original proposal, we actually identified some specific types of solar panels, for example. But we changed that to allow the same or equivalent type of items. And then we added a number of additional considerations for that regarding, for example, gas furnaces. We added at 95% to 96%, allowing hybrid water heaters, not just tankless. Kitchen faucets on plumbing features were added that meet water scent standards. So these are the types of things. The roof pitch was changed. So anyway, a lot of these items were put together. The detail is attached. I've covered most of those. I don't know if I need to go into detail on each of those. I think that gives you a sense of what is happening. We've had a couple of developers ask, you know, and look at this and say some of these changes would be great and are willing to consider doing that in our city. And I think these are done on now acreage up to 10 acres. That was another significant change, was just five acres we would allow it on. So with those changes, it's now before us. That is the issue. I think I covered everything. If not, council, let's bring those up now. If not, then we will open public comment period on that. Is anyone here to comment?
Danny, here is 1078 Gadsouk Drive Sandy. I don't think I did a good enough job last week asking for this change, but I want to maybe make a suggestion, kind of draw a picture as to what I envision this being. I would ask that we look at solar panels and maybe consider a solar panel by itself. I looked at the cost of a Tesla roof and looked at the effectiveness. I did a really simple Google search and you can all get out your phones today and just look at the difference between a solar panel and a Tesla roof. And you'll see that the Tesla roof is not as efficient as a solar panel. And so for me, I'm looking at a Tesla roof or equivalent and saying my cost will jump $20,000 to $25,000 by putting on a Tesla roof. Now, it looks nicer, no question, but efficient, it's not as efficient. So if you get on and just look at, do just a standard Google search today, you'll see that we're putting in a requirement for a roof that is very specific, but doesn't give us the efficiency. So we're talking about sustainability. So if we're going to put a roof on that costs more money, makes it more expensive for the consumer, but is not as efficient, then our purpose is, I think, being defeated there. And so I get a little concerned when I go and look at it and say, okay, I'm going to be required to put on a roof that's Tesla or similar, my cost is going to go up, which ultimately is going to go down to the consumer. So I get a little worried there. And I talked to a builder after I left here real brief and just said, hey, what are your thoughts? And he said, I can make this work. And I said, how are you going to make this work? And he said, well, my thought is I want to pre-sell every single one of these properties and I want the consumer to eat the cost of the solar panel. Well, for me, that's a little concerning because we get a subdivision, a 10-acre subdivision. We put 40 homes in there to try to pre-sell 40 homes with the Tesla roof and say, we're going to sell it to you for $400,000, but you're going to have $40,000 of the solar panels in addition that's post-closing. To me, that's a little concerning. I had envisioned, and maybe this is different and it's my own view, I had envisioned building in a solar panel, putting on brick and building that into the cost of my home. And so if we're saying, hey, let's put a solar panel on, but we're going to make it a burden, we all want solar panel. I want solar panel. But it's a 20-year repay, you know, maybe a 14-year repay. And so if we're saying, hey, we're going to sell you this wonderful home, sustainable, it has all these wonderful assets, but the day you close, you now get a $40,000 bill because the city wants us to do this, you know, we all want it, but is it going to be effective for the homeowner? And so for me, it's a little concerning. I'd rather say, hey, let's bring that cost down a little bit, or let's change the text and say, builder, developer, me, you're going to put the solar panel on, but you're going to have to build that into the cost of your home. And I think I can do that with the solar panel. There's no possible way with that additional $25,000 or $30,000, I can do that with a Tesla roof. It's just not possible. And so I get a little concerned that, you know, we're going to be sustainable, but we're not going to make it affordable to the public. And so it's really concerning to me. So I want you guys to reconsider that and say, let's, you know, if we want solar panels, let's go with the solar panel. You know, if we want it to consume or cancel out a majority of our energy cost, let's do that, but let's really consider affordability here. Now, I will be honest, it doesn't look as good. It doesn't look as good as the Tesla roof. But your first four or five articles make it very clear, it's not as effective, it's not as efficient, but it costs more money. So that really is my big concern. I think we can live with everything else. I can live with the brick. You know, would I like the brick to be maybe 60%? We can do 80, fine. Insulation, we can live with. The rest is really, really simple, but this Tesla roof issue, I think, is a big concern. And, you know, if we're going to put it on the consumer at the end of the day, it's even more concerning to me and should be to you guys as a council. So that's kind of my thought. Any questions for me?
No. Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak to this? Wonder if I have, would the council be okay if I asked Mr. Pastrick to come up and comment on this, since he did a lot of research on it as well?
Oh, is there a specific question I can?
Yes, the comment on the solar panels and the cost and the efficiency.
Sure. So the Tesla solar tiles are definitely more expensive than just doing regular solar panels. And the reason that, so Ken Millen is the builder, one of the builders that spoke last week. And the reason that he ends up doing pre-sales is that having the home be in the name of the owner from the get-go, they're actually eligible for the federal tax credits. Whereas if it's the builder that's actually building the home, then they're not eligible for the federal tax credits. So that's, and that applies whether you're doing Tesla solar tiles or just regular solar In terms of the efficiency, with solar panels, you can, you can change the angle or the location of those on the roof to sort of optimize that. Whereas with a Tesla solar tile, it's just whatever your roof pitch is. So you, there's the ability to sort of customize, if you will, the angle to get more light, if you will, from just a traditional solar panel. But in talking with the builder that we worked with closely on this, they feel like you can still generate enough power to power at least the electricity needs of the house.
With the tile solar?
Okay. Do you find for me tile solar and solar panel? The panels added on and the tile solar goes down?
Is like your shingle?
Yeah.
But each tile has its own solar?
Yeah.
Right. And ultimately, it really was an aesthetic consideration because certainly you can generate the same solar power with panels. It was more of an aesthetic consideration.
And didn't we change the pitch of the house to optimize the sun?
It was reduced to A12, yes.
No, it was still the 1012.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, black prediction. So in the way that it reads, as the power, the solar power generation system shall meet or exceed the features of a Tesla solar roof, does not necessitate the actual product of the Tesla roof, as long as it's equivalent. It can be, any other solar configuration that meets those same?
Right. Except for the, so yes, it's just right now, the tile-type roof, Tesla's the only one I'm aware of. Now, there may be other companies that come out with a similar product. That's the only one I'm aware of currently. But I think it's intended to be more, again, with the way it's worded, it would be a tile product as opposed to a traditional panel, as written.
So we need to clarify that it's a tile into the solar panels, if that's the way we choose to go, just so that there's not a question of, well, it actually is more efficient than the solar, than the tile, so what do you really mean by equivalent a little better?
So we, the way it's worded says, the solar power generation system shall meet or exceed the features of a Tesla solar roof. And so, again, if we need to be more specific, but to me, that means that the tile, like, that is a feature because it is the roof as opposed to having a panel mounted on top of the roof. That is the roof.
So you believe that's specific enough to enforce that?
I do, yes. If the intent of the council is to have a tile roof, then yes, I believe it's specific enough.
So are they only required to put the tile, the solar tiles on the side of the roof that is efficient or all the way around? And you could put asphalt tiles on the front if you're facing north and do your south exposure the Tesla, or are you intending for the entire roof to be?
The entire roof.
Okay.
Is that also an aesthetic consideration?
Right. Because it's just the, there'd be quite a, you'd definitely be able to tell where you transition from a tile to an asphalt shingle, and so you'd want it to be consistent.
Well, you know, this is an energy efficiency project, proposal, kind of a pilot plan, but it's also about being a special neighborhood. And if solar power can be achieved with aesthetic sensibilities, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of that. It kind of pains me a little bit to see these new houses with these beautiful architectural shingles and solar panels that look at a place on the south side, west side, whichever part of the house that happens to be. And achieving both of those goals, I think, is greater than achieving one of those goals. Can I make a motion? No, we're still in public comment. I did Mr. Pastrick in the middle of that. So if you would hold your motion, you can make comments, but when Mr. Pastrick has finished, I don't know if there's anyone else. We'll see if anyone else here wants to speak.
Maybe one other comment, if I may, on that is, in talking with another builder, if someone wanted to do a more modern type house, we have a flat roof, then in a scenario like that, having a more traditional solar panel would actually be hidden by the parapet wall that goes around the house. And you don't get the aesthetic benefit of the tile simply because there is no tile, right? So that could be a scenario if the council were open to a more modern house design, that you could do a flat roof with a parapet that essentially hides the panels. And, but again, that's, what was written into the code is more of a traditional house with a pitched roof and bricks.
But a flat roof wouldn't be allowed under the ordinance, right?
That's right.
We could look at that in the future, I guess. We've changed roof pitches before that were required, where someone comes in and says, hey, we want to have a different design and kind of change the housing standard to accommodate it. And I somewhat worry about going down that road where we can't get out of our own way, where we can't get anything past because there's something else and something else and maybe this or maybe that. And we don't even have, we don't have a building proposal, anybody that's hankering to do it yet, as far as I know. But I'm certainly anxious to go forward with it. And as I've stated all along, with the understanding that we're venturing into new territory and that may need changes and modifications in the future and wouldn't want to be discouraging the builders, that, you know, that they could do something and meet 10 out of 12 requirements. And if we were changed too, we'd have a beautiful, efficient neighborhood, but they're discouraged from even bringing those changes to us. I think that, my mindset anyways, that we're open to modification in the future so we can get it right. Right. The overall, the most important thing is this, the big goal is to have a great neighborhood that's very sustainable. And if they can bring something to us that...
And if they can bring something to us that maybe we need to fix something in our code to reach that goal.
And even if they came in and said, you know, I can only do 7,900 foot longs. Right? I mean, there's always a way if we're meeting the ultimate goal of a beautiful, sustainable, unique, attractive area that's bringing in people that will spend a little bit more money to have what... To have, you know, fulfill their conscientious needs of sustainability, which I think is a kind of resident we want to attract to us.
Steve, any developer who would want to... Who would apply for a change to the zone would also need a development agreement.
Exactly.
And in the development agreement, they could describe how they're going to address the idea of solar power and the roof style for their home. And we could amend that or...
Exactly.
Or not pass it. What if we left it more open? And then, if it didn't feel right when they brought the development agreement, we ask for changes to make it work?
I would rather keep it as it is and then not encourage changes because I think this is a great situation. I think the pre-selling and having the homeowner get the rebates and all those different things can be a workaround. So I think we put it in as it is and then see where it goes. I'd rather hire... Hold ourselves to the higher standard just because I think that's what people that are gonna want, these houses are gonna want.
I just worry about, you know, making just this narrow path when there's many ways that... And the things that we didn't think about that developers think about, that we can accomplish our same goal and encourage that kind of development.
And I agree with you, Lars, except that I'm concerned about opening the door too wide if we just had a statute that said, you know, energy-efficient homes.
No, no, I'm not saying that. May just a little bit wider, though.
And then we're just having application after application after application, and pretty soon, we don't have any standard at all.
I'm not suggesting that.
And maybe if I can clarify on that, the... So technically, through a development agreement, someone could propose just about anything. It doesn't mean the council has to approve it. It's really more as staff, as we visit with people, do we say, hey, if you can come up with something that still meets the intent, but it's equivalent or better, then I think the council would be open to that. Or if we just say, you know what? The council's very specific, wants just these features, and they're really not interested in entertaining any kind of a development agreement that would otherwise change that.
And I think that's what you've done before with, say, the roof pitch, right? We had some development, they wanted to change the roof pitch. You brought us pictures and showed us that this is gonna work, and I think we passed that.
Right. And that would be if, again, if the council is open to that. I see this as being someone coming in and providing specific home plans and saying, this is what we want to build. And again, if... I'd just be looking for the council's direction. If you're open to that kind of idea, we can let developers know that. Or just say, you know what? They're really... We really just want to stick to exactly this, and there's really no interest in modifying that through a development agreement.
Well, and I think my concern is, we've lessened the lot size by about half of what we really have in our new standards. The lot size, the house size. We've given so many concessions. And kind of like, we want you to do this, so we're willing to do this, this, and this. We should, you know, lower the cost of the house, and these others will add a little bit. But I think we stick to the higher standards and see where it gets us for a while. Because I really think where we've given up so much, we need to ask for a little bit more.
You know, the concept we've developed is that we want some energy efficiency. But at some point, yes, we do have to select a standard. And I think that unless there are significant modifications, you set the standard and you say, basically, you have to meet this. If someone comes in with a minor change or one change, you know, we would consider that. But if someone... If we don't have this standard, someone comes along and says, well, you know, about these six or eight things I need to change. We just say, look, we're just not interested in that. But the staff we rely upon to say, is this market possible? In other words, if we've set a standard so high, no one's going to do it, you need to give us feedback and say, hey, this doesn't work. So our staff is really the key to that, as they work with developers to say, does this work? And it seems that you've given us that kind of guideline, that this is probably what will work or close to it. So I would say, yes, I want to just move forward with it and say to staff, we're willing to tweak minor things, but we don't want to rewrite the ordinance.
It reminds me a little bit of when we passed the RE zone. We had many people here telling us that this was so restrictive, they would never build houses like that here. And all we needed to do was pass it, and they made applications in our really beautiful RE zoned houses. So the impossible happens. Just need to make it the law.
Any other things for Mr. Pasterek? If not, thank you, sir. You've been a great help. Anyone else here to speak to this issue?
I'd have two quick thoughts real fast. One thing... I know Ken Millen says he can do this with rebates or through rebates.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Danny Gutierrez. I know Ken Millen says he can do this through rebates, but I want you guys to consider that just last week, Rocky Mountain Power talked about reducing the rebates on solar panel effective January 1st of 21. We are now in February. If I come to you guys to build a subdivision, by the time I have my road and curb and gutter in, we're talking 60... Or sorry, about six months, potentially. So that's gonna put me into August. We slow down in the winter, traditionally. So we know that those rates are gonna decrease by about 70% come January 1st. So I agree with you, Steve, that Ken can do that today with the rebates at the way they are. But our rebates will decrease significantly come January 1st. If it gets approved, and Rocky Mountain Power, as you know, will probably get that approved. When I look at the tile roof, I get a little concerned. I'm not saying, let's not get rid of... Let's get rid of solar. We're talking about a sustainable neighborhood. We're talking about a sustainable home. We're willing to put in brick that's gonna be, as we know, lasting a significant amount more time than the other materials we're using today. We're willing to put water-wise plants in. We're willing to reduce the water in the yard by about 70%. I don't think tiles in Salt Lake City and tiles in Utah are proven. If you look at California, California has a system that is way overburdened. There's so much electrical use. The electrical companies, the state are giving rebates significant to make your cost almost virtually nothing. We don't have that here in the state of Utah. So as a developer, I look at it and say, hey, if we make it super narrow, it's gonna be very, very difficult. I'm a small guy. I met with Steve and a few weeks ago with Ivory Holmes. Ivory Holmes came in and said, we cannot do this no matter what. I'm saying, hey, I personally can do it, but it's gonna be extremely difficult to do it with a panel... With a tile because it's just that much more expensive. I'm willing to do solar. I think it would be fantastic to do solar. I just think the cost is so much higher. Now, to the point of the RE zone. I'm to the point with my property that I've gotta make a decision, probably as soon as tomorrow, as for you guys vote. Do I just go with the RE zone? I take in 19 lots and I do 19 lots? My break-even point's gonna be virtually the same. But we have the opportunity, as a council, as a city, to do something that I think is wonderful. I can get there. I'm so, so close. You know, Ken is saying, yeah, we can put it on the consumer. But I promise you, as rebates drop 70%, it's gonna be extremely difficult to achieve what we want to achieve. And maybe we never get the subdivisions that we want. Maybe we do, I don't know. But that would be my thought on that, is as our rebates decrease, it's gonna be very, very difficult to achieve. And so I would ask you to really consider that. And then, you know, maybe let's not make it as narrow. I'm not saying let's get rid of solar. I'm not saying let's get rid of the insulation. I'm not saying let's get rid of the water-wise plants and, you know, the lower efficiencies in our plumbing. But I do think it's a really big concern to say, hey, let's put $45,000. That's what it's gonna cost us in the shingles that we don't even know will work with the weather we have, the freezing. My brother-in-law has a slate roof up in Mount Little Comwood Canyon. You know what happens when it snows on the slate? It just runs. It becomes an issue. We're gonna have the same issue. Our pitch is gonna be really, really steep. We're gonna have glass tiles on there. All our snow's gonna come off, it's gonna freeze. You look at slate, the slate breaks when it freezes. I think glass may have the same issue. So I would just consider that. You guys will make the decision that's best, for what you guys think is best. But I... With solar, I think we've really gotta be careful to name a specific product. The solar panel, we know, accomplishes the exact same thing. It's not as pretty, I agree. So, thank you.
Any other further comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it... We'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I'd like to say, I appreciate the public input we've received here today. And one thing that I'm sure of is that perspectives differ. And I have learned through my time on the council that the city will last a long time, will outlast me. And I don't want to be in a hurry to make changes just so that I can see them. Want to plan for people that haven't been born yet. And I think this is one of those opportunities. And with that, I would move for approval of ordinance 20-06.
Second?
Any further comments? I do have one comment. Councilman Bueller mentioned that. But the offset to that is that we don't have a lot of developable land left. So although we may hold off on, you know, we're not sure where we will be, maybe all that land will be used up.
That's true.
But anyway, not proposing any changes, just wanted to remind us we may not have a choice.
And someday, my house will be torn down, and the Jetsons will build a house there that will be different. And it'll still be within West Valley City.
Maybe. Okay. Seeing no further comments?
One more.
Oh, yes, please.
One more comment. I'm sympathetic to the solar panels, not just... Not just for the cost-effectiveness of it, but... But I think it's also better for good use of materials. If we're covering the whole roof with Tesla panels and half of them are not really getting sunlight, I think that's a waste of materials and goes against what, you know, one of the things we're trying to accomplish here. And I think we should be flexible and allow solar panels, not just the tiles. But I've heard a lot from council members, Lang and Bueller and the mayor, but I wonder what the rest of you think? And if you would be... If you would consider allowing panels, then we could vote no against this motion and then vote yes for one that allows panels. I think the vote... Be the only one to vote no on this issue that's so important to me.
I think that there is balance, and we've seen that with other developments in terms of the leveraging. That's maybe not the right word, but considering the variances and changes when it comes to the development agreement. So I'm actually okay with what's been said in regards to starting off with the higher standard and just getting something started. This is brand-new for us. We don't have a lot of developable land left. I get that. Technologies could change. Rebates will come and go. They will fluctuate. So I'm interested in at least starting off. And yeah, let's say it. I'm okay with the higher standard. If it doesn't work, we can look at it. But I do know that there is that flexibility with considering development agreements. I'm with the mayor. I don't want to see people come in with a whole laundry list of things they're requesting. I think that has been used in the past, and this is an okay way to look at those as they're submitted. And if we get zero submissions, then we know I voted in wrong. So that's what my train of thought is.
I'd just let you know, I support Bill and also Ken with the motion, also for a second.
And personally, I don't think the solar panels look that bad. You know, granted, if they weren't there and if it was a solar roof, yes, it would look a little cleaner. But you have the same problem with snow on the solar panels as you do on the tile roofs, so... You know, it's the same reason I don't have a dish TV antenna. It's because I have to scrape it off when it snows. And I don't like climbing on my roof in the snow. So I think if we hold to the higher standard, it can be, again, modified on a case-by-case basis rather than drop the standard and not keep the high standards we want.
Thanks for sharing.
Mr. Nordfeld, Councilman Nordfeld, thou persuadest me, so... And for this reason, as I heard him speak, and that is, it seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but on all of the standards we've adopted, there are issues that have been around and used, like more insulation. I mean, it's known, it's exact. The Tesla tiles have to be fairly new. I think they're in their infancy. It's kind of like buying the brand-new computer at the bleeding edge. And I say, well, I know what I'm getting with solar panels. They've been around, they work. So... And if... But if this passes, then I'll make a statement, okay? Be interesting, so pay attention. See any further comments? Seeing none to our city recording.
Councilman Fittis, morning. Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Mueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And the statement I would make is that we did agree that if there was one minor variation, we would consider it. So I just reiterate that and see where things go from there with this standard. With that, that completes our regular council meeting agenda. We do have a redevelopment agency meeting that will be held here shortly, as soon as we adjourn, so... Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, we're adjourned. All who came for our regular council meeting, thank you.
I am gonna step out for one minute.
Okay. We'll call to order the meeting, special meeting of the RDA Redevelopment Agency. And note that all members of the agency are present. Ms. Lang has... Is absent for a moment, but we'll be back. We've had an opening ceremony. We've had the roll call. Approval of minutes of our February 4th, 2020 special meeting.
I move for the approval of our February 4th minutes.
Sit. Been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've discussed Resolution 2002, Designating a Survey Area to Determine the Feasibility of Establishing a Community Reinvestment Project Area. Mr. Springmeyer, do you want to add anything to what we've already discussed?
Only if there's questions.
Okay.
I do have one question that I ask.
Then I do.
I wanted you to just get your stats in. But in the past, because these are pretty new to me, in the past, has the survey area always become the actual CRA area? Or has the survey area, as you do the survey, have there... Has there any been... Ever been something that comes up that makes you then determine that maybe the area for the CRA should be changed? should be changed?
So, John Springmeyer with the Redevelopment Agency, it's a really good question. I can't speak for certain in all of the project areas in West Valley City. I can tell you from my experience, the ones I've done here, both as staff and prior as a consultant, I don't recall any for West Valley City where the survey, where the final project area boundaries differed that from the survey area. That being said, there are a number of other municipalities that, when I was doing this as a consultant full-time, where that did occur. I just can't think of any in West Valley where that occurred.
Thank you.
Are you going to make a comment, and I'm going to make a motion? I just want to say thank you to the economic and community and economic department, trying to put option number two in here, and I appreciate it very much. I know you have been working very hard on this one, and I appreciate your time and your effort, to be honest with you. And I thank you so much for making, for yourself, available to explain to us in the study meeting and our private meeting, I appreciate it very much. I still stick with my option number two, or map two, that's the one I want to make a motion, and there's a couple items under map two is the church, and also the overbridge, what we discussed in a study meeting, I want to let them out, so is that my motion is I move with the map number two, or option number two.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, discussion.
I, I'm not going to vote in favor of this, because I believe in the determining that we need to designate a survey area, I think option one, map, gives the city and the Redevelopment Agency more opportunities, and will be better for our residents, or at least have an opportunity to be better for our residents in making it smaller. It limits our opportunities, so that's why I would, I would hope that we would vote no for this, and then approve a motion that adopts option one map.
So I see that area as quite a unique area, and I think moving to option one would decrease how many people are in that area and the stability of that area. I think if you took the development all the way back to that street and eliminated that many homes, I think it would substantially change the, kind of the atmosphere of that area. So that's why I'm more in favor of staying closer to 35th, I mean, not 35th, sorry, Redwood Road, and preferred, I would have preferred the west side of Redwood Road, but I can, the option two is a lot better than option one. I just think it's too many homes affected, and we can improve the sidewalks and, you know, whatever else with those monies, because it is so adjacent, but I don't think we would hurt by leaving them out.
And I, you know, I've got to go back to what we were told in our study meeting, that wherever we draw that line, they'll adjust to that and make it work, and we can work in adjacent areas if we can show a reason. I would kind of prefer to see it go all the way to the river, and then I'd kind of prefer to see it go all the way out of 72nd West, so. Maybe we just need to take it a little piece at a time, and I'm of a mood to approve any option tonight, I think.
I have a similar train of thought, only because I don't think that the line was drawn arbitrarily in either case. And so initially, I would agree that the larger option, if any increment, you know, needs to be, that benefit stays within that zone, then yeah, I would be all for it. But I think it is justified that it's adjacent, and that it could still be used to benefit the neighborhood, even if we kept with the smaller ones. So I'm kind of like, Steve, I'm okay with either one, but I'll support the motion as made.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kamen?
Mr. Pittis Manu?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Aye.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passed with majority.
One more final motion.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
I have heard from time to time that we're just, we just all vote together and always do the same thing, and never think really deeply about anything, and tonight ought to be a lesson for everybody that that's not the case. And with that, I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor? All in adjourn.